It is a little after seven, sorry for a little bit of a late start here. The roll call is all selectmen are present and if it's okay, I would ask all of us to stand up and do the pledge of allegiance and I'll ask Mr. Newhouse to get us started, if that's okay?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. I will also make note of the fact that each of the members and Beverly are wearing an item of orange clothing this evening in recognition of the fact that September is leukemia awareness month and so if only for a moment as you engage in your activities on a day-to-day basis, if you give some consideration to that horrible disease and to in some way give some solace or aid to anyone that you know that might be suffering from it. I'm thankful to all of you for wearing the orange. Transmitting of Treasury warrants, number seven, seven A, eight, eight A, nine, nine A, ten, ten A, eleven, and eleven A. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Say it.
Motion has been made and seconded, it is their discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Unanimous. We have no minutes to approve, so we'll go right to our appointments. As was mentioned, I think, we are just coming out of an executive session that started at 6:30 for the discussion of real property issues. Our seven o'clock appointment is with Mr. Paul Gagnon of Forest Auto Repair. It is a public hearing relative to the request to obtain a Class II garage license for the property located at 600 Main Street. Mr. Gagnon, if you wouldn't mind taking a seat on the side here. How are you, sir?
Good.
Good, good. So I'll just turn it right over to you, Mr. Gagnon, if you want to just summarize what the nature of your request is and I believe you probably have...
Certified.
Yeah, the certificates in your possession, if you don't mind, sir?
Yeah.
You need both sets? Okay, okay, that's fine. Okay, thank you. Yeah, so when you get situated again there, if you could just summarize your request and then we'll open up for discussion.
I'm trying to apply for my Class II garage license because occasionally I come across customers' cars that need work and they don't want to fix it. A lot of times I will buy it off of them and then I can fix it myself and sell it and, you know, make some money at the same time and save somebody some money if they want to buy a used car.
Okay. Very good. Jeff, do we have recommendations or...
Yes. Let me, I guess, preface it by explaining that in reviewing the map that Mr. Gagnon provided and the board should have a copy, you'll note that the original map identifies the used cars as being located on the Main Street side of the existing building and there's a reference to 14 feet being from the sideline of the roadway, so even though Main Street is actually delineated as beyond the sidewalk, the town's right-of-way extends to that black line, so there's 14 feet from the sideline to the building. In the section of the zoning law that pertains here, Section 4.1.13 notes in part, "No used vehicles shall be parked within 20 feet of the sideline of the street." So in this was not picked up under prior review, but I did have spoke with Al Spalding later today and he acknowledged that, so I've also had some conversations with Mr. Gagnon about the prospect of locating the used cars in another space that would meet the zoning requirement and be outside of that 20-foot sideline buffer and Mr. Gagnon, is it, are you prepared to do that?
Yes, we could put them on the other side of the building. I got two spots designated over there.
So based upon, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Gagnon, but as I understand it, based upon the conversation from this afternoon, you would be comfortable with locating the used cars, again, if the board is looking at this map, to the north of the building in that space between the existing garage and the northerly property line? Is that fair to say?
Yes, absolutely.
So in that case, I think the, there should not be a problem from a zoning perspective. These conversations that I had with the, with Mr. Gagnon were late this afternoon, so I didn't have an opportunity to speak again with Al Spalding, but just to go through the recommendations to this point, there's a recommendation from the police chief, "Upon review, the Wilmington Police Department recommends approval of the Class II garage license application submitted by Paul J. Gagnon, Forest Auto Repair, 600 Main Street, Wilmington, Mass." The recommendation, and again, this was based upon the initial filing from the building inspector, was, "Upon further review, the proposal needs a 20-foot front setback and this does not comply." Then the review from the fire department pursuant to application request for issuance of a Class II garage license submitted by Mr. Paul J. Gagnon, Forest Street Repair, for the property located at 600 Main Street, Wilmington, Mass. Map 41, parcel 132, the Wilmington Fire Department recommends approval. So what I would suggest to the board this evening, based upon Mr. Gagnon's willingness to relocate the used vehicles to that northerly side, that the board grant approval subject to review and by the building inspector and subject to his acknowledgement that he meets the zoning requirements.
Thank you, Jeff. I'll turn it over to the board first before we go to the public, so I'll start down to my left, Judy, if you have questions or commentary.
No, I think, you know, everything appears to be in order in light of the recommendation from the town manager. Obviously, in supporting this, I would be supportive of it subject to the terms that were just conveyed by the manager, but other than that, I don't have any issues with the proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Real quick, I'm in agreement, I'll be honest, I drove by that area for over 31 years, at least twice a day, and believe me, more than 31 years. ANS-Tone was there and Unique Foreign Motors was there and I can remember them always having a car in the front trying to sell cars, but I'm glad that you guys have worked that out, so if you're willing to move that back like the manager's saying, that's not going to be an issue, so, but for years and, can I just ask you a question? Did you pay for this plant to get done?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, at least you're being very honest about the setback of 14 feet, so that gives you a little credit there, you know, so, and, you know, and I, yeah, if you can scale, put it back like the manager says, I don't have an issue supporting it, you know? Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. McCoy. Mrs. Maggie?
Ah, good.
Mr. Newhouse?
I think it's been said.
Very well. Then if someone, oh, I'm sorry, it's a public hearing, so I will go to the audience if there's anyone that wants to raise a question or offer a concern. I see none. So if someone is of the mind to make a motion, we would take that up.
Make a motion to grant the request subject to the review of the building inspector as indicated by the town manager.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded, is there further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Unanimous? Thanks, Mr. Gagnon.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Good luck to you. I guess at this point, do we have to vote to close the hearing or, I forget the parliamentary process on the public hearing?
Yeah, I think it's, yeah.
Do I have the authority?
Yes.
I'll close the hearing on that subject matter, so.
What was the next step?
The building inspector, I'll have Al Spalding, the building inspector, review it and with his concurrence that it complies with the zoning bylaw, then you'll be able to pick up the license.
So Mr. Spalding will reach out to Mr. Gagnon after he's reviewed it?
Well, our office will.
Yeah, okay, very good.
Appreciate it, thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Our 7:10 appointment is with Mr. Kevin Woods of PR Restaurants LLC, doing business as Panera Bread, with regards to a request to obtain a common victual's license for property located at 228 Main Street. Mr. Woods.
Actually, we are here representing for Mr. Woods from PR Restaurants.
Introduce yourselves, if I could ask you to, please.
My name's Christine Benjamin with Panera, PR Restaurants, doing business as Panera Bread, and District Manager.
And I'm Burke Marsham, the General Manager of the location.
Thank you, thanks for being here. As with the previous situation, if you could just sort of summarize what the nature of the request is and what brings you to us this evening?
Just to grant the convict, we've already had it in the past, it was just changed hands from Panera LLC to PR management within the last two months.
Very well. Thank you for that. Jeff, do you want to expand on that or offer any recommendations?
Yes, recommendations come from the Health Director, Shelley Newhouse. I recommend approval of the application for a common victual license for Kevin S. Woods, PR Restaurants LLC, DBA, Panera Bread, 228 Main Street. I have a recommendation from Al Spalding, the building inspector. After review and consideration of the town and Wilmington bylaw and all applicable codes, I have no outstanding zoning issues and with the above-mentioned business. So we're good to go.
Thank you. Are there questions? I'll start over to my right here if there's other questions from anyone of the applicants?
I do not have any.
Seeing no questions, if there is a motion, we certainly accept it.
Move to grant the request.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, it is their discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of granting the request? Unanimous? Thanks for coming, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick side note, if I may, I just wanted to compliment Panera on having your meeting space. Aside from the quality of your food, it's fantastic, but separate from that, the fact that you have meeting space, that the town has used, I know various organizations have used it, businesses, I know the Chamber of Commerce has used it, it's so appreciated because meeting space is at a minimum in town, so I just wanted to let you know that that is duly recognized among your quality of food.
We were sure how many people got knew that it was there, we appreciate you letting us know that we were deciding, thank you very much, it helps us decide. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our 7:20 appointment is with, and forgive me, in advance, Shasha Diyar?
Shasha.
Okay. Bogelli?
Bogelli.
All right, we got that one. Watertown Enterprises Incorporated, doing business as Subway regarding a request to obtain a common victual's license for property located at 206 Ballard Vale Street, Unit 2. Mr. Bogelli?
Yes, sir. So I am a Subway franchisee since 2011. I opened seven restaurants, I run four restaurants right now. I'm into the food business for the past five years and back in India I was into the food business too. So this is my sixth, seventh location and my closest Subway here is in Tewksbury, which is on exit 42. That's a convenience store and that store is the second highest sales in Massachusetts in convenience stores. So I'm here for the common victual license and we're planning on opening it in the first week of October. The construction is still going on and it's a turnkey operation. My contractor is taking care of the building permits and all of the permits. My responsibility is for the common vic and the Board of Health.
Thank you, sir, for that summary. Just out of curiosity, is it your intent to personally run that operation or will you be?
I will be running personally.
You will?
I have a general manager, a district manager, and each store has a manager and a shift lead for both the shifts and everybody will be served satisfied.
Wonderful. Mr. Hall, do you have recommendations?
Yes, a recommendation from Shelley Newhouse, the Health Director, recommend approval of the application for common victual license for Watertown Enterprises, Inc., DBA, Subway 206 Ballard Vale Street, Unit 2. Also from the public, the building inspector, Al Spalding, "After review and consideration of the town and Wilmington bylaw and all applicable codes, I have no outstanding zoning issues with the above-mentioned business." I would just mention that based upon a review of the application, it appears that initially there was a, an indication that there would not be workers' compensation required. And Beverly had a conversation today to indicate that there will be workers' comp required?
That's true, yes, sir.
Okay.
That was my mistake, probably, I might have selected the wrong one, but yeah, we do need a workers' compensation certificate and we will be having at least 10 employees working there for us.
Okay.
So I'm going to submit the workers' comp license before I open this store, before even we go for the Board of Health, I'm going to submit that.
So my recommendation to the board is that the board grant the common victuals subject to the provision of the workers' comp certificate and meeting all the Board of Health regulations.
Thank you for that recommendation. Are there questions, concerns, otherwise?
No, just curious, on the hours of operation?
We'll be open Monday to Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Saturday, 8:00 to 9:00 p.m. Sunday, 9:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Thank you.
And Subway will be officially closed only for two, three max days in a year, so that will be Christmas, Thanksgiving, and one of the local holidays. What, as a franchisee, we could pick one day as a day off. Apart from that, days like 362 days, we will be open.
As a frame of reference, if I may, I'm sorry, Judy, were you done with the questions?
Yeah, I'm just impressed with the...
Oh, location, so it's, for those that might be watching, this is in the area where the new Target restaurant, I'm sorry, Target stores, but it's in like a strip area?
The strip mall right before the Target, we are right next to the Dunkin' Donuts and then next to the Sweet Pizza, which is coming up, it's a new chain, I believe, a new pizza house.
Very well. Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you.
So unless there are additional questions, I certainly would accept a motion.
I'll make a motion that we grant the request with the guidelines outlined by the town manager.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor? It's unanimous. We wish you well, good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a moment, just to sign a document here and then we'll... Our 7:30 appointment, which we're a little ahead of schedule, so give me just a moment here. If perhaps, Jeff, if it's okay with you, we can cover a couple of communications so we stay on point?
Sure.
Especially where the 7:30 is a public hearing.
First, under Communications is a letter to Kimberly Boss, the Secretary of FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. This concerns the proposed Kinder Morgan Pipeline. You will recall that the most recent iteration of this lateral line calls for it to run in close proximity to the Benevento Quarry. There was a comment period that initially was slated to expire October 31st, they've since extended the comment period, I believe, through October 16th, but we were shooting to meet that deadline, so this correspondence raises concerns about both the proximity to the quarry and the potential impact that the blasting would have on the pipeline. It suggests that there should be an independent evaluation performed by FERC that would look at things including the seismic readings, geological attributes, pipe detail, pipe building specifications, and depth of pipe. We also express some concerns about the impacts to the wetland resource areas, land around the town's Zone 2 groundwater protection district, noting that two of our remaining wellfields are near that area and so that is, has been submitted to FERC. Also, we have correspondence from Congressman Moulton, and I'll just read this into the record. This also is to Kimberly Boss from FERC. Dear Secretary Boss, I am writing to request that the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission provide residents of the 6th District of Massachusetts with the opportunity to express their concerns regarding the proposed Kinder Morgan Northeast Energy Direct Project. While FERC has held four scoping meetings in Massachusetts, none of the scoping meetings have been easily accessible to residents affected by the proposed Linfield lateral pipeline. And therefore, I therefore request that FERC include a scoping meeting for Federal Energy Regulatory Commission docket number PF 14-22-000 in the 6th Congressional District of Massachusetts. The proposed project would upgrade infrastructure in Pennsylvania, New York, New Hampshire, Connecticut, and Massachusetts. While it has the potential to improve reliability of access to energy during peak demand, my constituents have serious concerns about the impact of the proposed Linfield lateral pipeline. Finally, I want to express my appreciation that the agency extended the period for the public comment through October 16, 2015. It is my aim to serve as an advocate for my constituents to ensure that their concerns are properly addressed and it is my belief that the extension should include an opportunity for communities affected by the Linfield lateral proposal to share their concerns. Sincerely, Seth Moulton.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask a quick question? Jeff, how is this, you know, I know that they extended the comment period, but can you just remind me how these are being addressed? So in other words, people get comments, do they make a commitment to getting back to every respective comment received or have they set a deadline for response? How do we know what the volley is back on this once these letters all go in?
I do not believe that FERC is going to respond to any of these comments, they will take them under consideration. Right now, we are, we have been to this point in this preliminary stage of the process and the date, I don't have it offhand, but it's coming up where it'll be a more formalized process for review of this project.
Okay.
But essentially, it's my understanding that comments are taken under advisement and one of the things that we'll be, I think, talking about at the next meeting is the opportunity to be an interveener in this process, which is a more formalized opportunity to, again, make comment.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on, or comments on that? You know, I wanted to just sort of call out or, I guess, recognize that Congressman Moulton has stepped up. To what degree or how much that will have an impact on the overall or on the finished product here is to be determined, but as far as I'm concerned, from my perspective, it's giving me some peace of mind or I guess, I'm very glad to have someone at the federal level, a federal legislator, and he says it here, acting as an advocate for his constituents. So while we have certainly had the assistance of Senator Tarr and our representatives in the House here at the state level, having someone at the federal level advocating for us to the federal, to FERC is, it gives us a little more teeth, I hope, and hopefully we'll get some better bandwidth and some response from them, hopefully in a positive manner. So I was complimentary of Seth Moulton because of that. It is, I think we can jump right in, it's just a moment early, but we may as well jump in unless there's an objection, Jeff, and go back to the 7:30. So our 7:30 appointment is a public hearing with Danielle Spicer, P.E., Senior Associate of Green International Affiliates Incorporated, with regards to a earth removal permit for the Yentile Farm Recreational Facility located at 9 Cross Street. Ms. Spicer?
Hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening.
I have just a board that I can just put in front, if that's easier.
Do you have one in the book? Or on a chair, do you want to?
I have an easel.
Take your time.
Okay, is this going to be an appropriate place to put this?
Do we have, do we have hard copies of what you're showing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, there we go. Hi, Danielle Spicer from Green International, I'm here presenting on the project at 9 Cross Street for the Yentile Farm Development Committee and this is for the new recreational facility along at 9 Cross Street. We're here tonight for the earth removal permit. Previously, we actually have already gone through the Conturbation Commission process and we did receive the order of conditions. So we're here tonight to basically discuss the amount of earth moving throughout the site and that will be taken off of the site. So the proposed development, just to give a very quick overview of it, is for a new athletic facility along here, we have a new turf field here, we have green space here with some basketball courts here, a playground area with a concession stand and pavilion with some parking along here. The site borders Cross Street to the west, Main Street to the south, and some adjacent wetlands to the north and east. And for our proposed development, basically, the existing site is somewhat of a disturbed site from 2008 when a previously, a previous developer had kind of started construction on the site and then stopped and left it. So what we do have on site are several stockpile, several different stockpiles throughout the site, where we have material that was brought in that wasn't actually used at all. So given that and then our proposed grading plan for the site, there actually will be a net overall export of material from the site, it's about 14,800 cubic yards, and I think we had that in the application. And the reason for that is basically, we, with these existing soils on site, we actually had a geotechnical engineer go out and take some samples of it so that we could demonstrate, see if there was any reuse suitability for reuse. And we actually found the majority of the materials could be reused on site. So what we've done is we are actually reusing the majority of that material on site. However, they brought on more material for their previous project than we could use for our project. So the, there's a net result that basically we have to take material off-site and we need to bring in some new material for our, you know, proposed pavement and rain garden that has specific material that needs to be brought on. So we'll be removing that material. Again, it's about 14,800 cubic yards off-site, we'll be, we've suggested for trucking purposes to kind of come off Cross Street, come up 129 and go straight to 93 that way and that's basically the quick summary, so if, I'd like to open it up to questions to see.
Yeah, thank you. Indeed, so I guess we'll, I'll start to my right, Mr. Newhouse, if you want to ask Ms. Spicer some questions or offer some commentary?
I really don't have any questions at this point. If there's any conditions that the town administration is recommending, I'd certainly like to hear about them.
Indeed. To that point, I don't know if there are specific recommendations. Jeff, do you want to touch on that now before we go through the board or?
I can certainly do that. So with regard to the Health Director's recommendations, she recommends approval of the earth removal permit for Danielle Spicer, P.E., Senior Associate, Green International, on behalf of the Town of Wilmington at 9 Cross Street. The building inspector reviewed the application for earth removal permit for the above property and have no outstanding zoning issues. Valerie Gingrich, Planning and Conservation Director, indicates, recommend approval of the earth removal permit for the Yentile Farm Recreational Facility at 9 Cross Street. The proposed project will reuse as much existing material as possible and create a new recreation open space for all ages. The Public Works Department, Mike Woods and Paul Looney, the town engineer, also addressed this. The Department of Public Works has reviewed the application for permit to remove the earth products within the Town of Wilmington for the above referenced project. The application was prepared and submitted by Danielle Spicer, P.E. of Green International, on behalf of the Town of Wilmington. The applicant is proposing to remove approximately 14,748 cubic yards of material from the project site to reconstruct an outdoor recreational facility with associated parking, utilities, and general site... and general site improvements. DPW has reviewed the application accompanying plans and documents and recommends granting the earth removal permit subject to the following conditions. One, the expiration of, at the expiration of the permit, the grades shall conform substantially to proposed grades as shown on the plan approved by the Town of Wilmington Conservation Commission, Department of Environmental Protection, and submitted herein. At the expiration of the permit, the entire area shall be covered with loam and seeded with a recognized grass seed of good quality, except where ledge rock is exposed in the areas containing parking areas, walkways, playgrounds, basketball courts, buildings, and synthetic turf athletic field. Number three, the permitee, its agents and employees shall use due caution when entering and leaving the site. The hauling route for construction vehicles and equipment shall be lined, limited to Cross Street to Lowell Street to Route 93, or Cross Street to Main Street to Route 95. Condition four, the permitee, its agents and employees shall use extreme caution when passing school buses. Five, the hours of hauling on ways used by the public shall be limited to Monday through Friday inclusive, and not earlier than 7:00 a.m., not later than 3:30 p.m. Six, the contractor shall agree to keep loam within the Town of Wilmington whenever possible. Seven, in the event of the above, above conditions are not faithfully observed and performed, then the selectmen shall have the option to revoke the permit at any time. Eight, this permit is not assignable. Nine, periodic inspection will be made by the Engineering Division to ensure the conditions of the permit are complied with. Ten, the applicant shall notify the town of his/her intentions to obtain a renewal of this permit at least 30 days before the expiration date of the permit. Eleven, if rock or ledge crushing operations are to be used on-site, they will be limited to the hours of operation between 9:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. Twelve, should blasting operations be needed, shall be in accordance with all town, state, and state laws, regulations, and policies. Thirteen, the contractor shall install a crushed stone construction entrance at the construction vehicle exit access location. Fourteen, the contractor is responsible for daily cleanup of all soil material, stones, et cetera, tracked along the hauling route. And fifteen, the contractor is responsible to limit all dust and excessive noise associated with the earth removal process.
Thank you for reviewing that, Mr. Hall. So, and thank you, Mr. Newhouse, for reminding me to go to that bullet. Mr. Smaglia, do you have commentary or questions?
No, I think that's, that covers it all, yeah.
To the left.
I'm good.
I just want to say that I'm good, and I just want to thank you, Danielle, and all of your team, on behalf of the committee. It's been exceptional to work with you and your team in every step of the way. You've certainly been a very, very positive influence on this project, and you've gotten everything done with your team, and we really appreciate it. So I just wanted to publicly thank you for supporting Wilmington in this project.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Yeah, from my perspective, I'm excited that this is the first, and many steps that, that need to be taken to get us to the point where we have a heck of a place to, to call our own, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, you mean few steps, not many steps, right? Okay.
A number of. Indeed. It is a public hearing, so at this time, I will go to the audience for any questions, or? Yes, sir.
Do we have an estimate of where the material's going to go yet, or is that to be determined?
Still to be determined. Right now, we're in the construction document phase, so we're just working, we're just finalizing our specifications. So we're working with the town to finalize whether they actually have use for some of the material on-site, or whether it would actually, the contractor would just take it off-site.
Okay, all right. To follow to that, it could go in other places in town, and we don't know yet, right?
Not at this point.
Not at this point, yes.
We're waiting to hear back from the town whether they have the use for it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Could you quick, Kevin, could I ask you just, out of formality, just introduce yourself and your address, and then we can go to your point.
Kevin McDonald, 140 Endo Street.
Thank you.
Wilmington, MS, 01887. Could you put up the plan that shows the proposed site as a finished look? So basically, we have a turf field, we have a parking area, a basketball, a couple basketball courts, and we have a, an event area which pretty much is lawn. From my recollection and experience being out there to see the type of material that's on the site, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that clay was brought into this site from the big dig. Clay holds water, it's really not something that makes sense to be put on, under any of these areas, since it's going to probably frost heave and not be very useful, correct?
Sure, I, I, yes, that is correct about clay. I will say, we had a geotechnical report, go out there and do, I think it was six test pits and five boreings on-site. Majority of the site does not have clay in it. There's a few small spots that have little pockets of clay, but the majority of the site is actually pretty well draining soils.
Yeah, I think you're correct on that. The clay that I was talking about is actually stockpiled toward the back of the property.
We actually did have all of the stockpile, soil piles actually tested for reuse ability, for reuse on-site, and the majority of, other than there's one up here, which is mostly just boulders and rocks and stuff that you're not going to be able to reuse at all, the majority of stuff is suitable soil that could be reused as ordinary fill on-site. Again, we have a little too much of it, but it can be reused as ordinary fill.
And I'm not sure I agree with you, because I saw the material being brought in, and it's pretty much clay out of the big dig in the Boston area. Anyway, the other material that is there is a very large quantity of loam, and since that was a farm, it's my guess that that loam is very high-quality loam. And I noticed in the presentation that the haul route is to Cross Street to Lowell Street to 93, or to Route 38. But you didn't mention that they could take a left out of Cross Street, use the town's own trucks, and take it right down to our recycling yard, which is probably less than a mile away. And since we have some fields that have loam on it that's not growing grass that good, because I think they mixed it with the salt and sand from the sweepings. And so it seems to me that it would make sense for the town to save a lot of money to use their own trucks and own equipment, say, on a rain day when they're not mowing grass or doing something like that, to haul it right down to our recycling yard so that we're guaranteed to have it in Wilmington.
That's really not part of, that's not what we're here to discuss this evening. Ultimately, this is the earth removal permit that we're granting, or presumably will grant in a few moments. The, the question about whether or not, or where the material will go has been answered a moment ago with, and the answer was, we're not really sure where it's going to go yet. It's, it's to be determined. It's part of this process, and this is the first step in that process. So, you know, your, your opinions on the salinity of, of the soil notwithstanding, at, at the end of the day, it's really not pertinent to this discussion.
Why would it not be pertinent? Because ultimately, it's an earth removal, it's a, it's a public hearing relative to earth removal. The items that I'm speaking about are earth removal items, and I'm just pointing out that it might be in the best interest of the town, okay? We have potential future cemetery needs, we have some other needs in town, and to have the material go into somebody's body, or get, get, having the material be given away for free just because somebody comes and trucks it, it doesn't seem like that's in the best interest of the community, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add, first of all, as was pointed out previously, we will be looking at whether any of this material can be used by the town. This 14,800 cubic yards is the maximum amount that would be removed. Perhaps it'll be less. So that's point number one. You know, point number two is that we are aware that the, the soil is of value, and in fact, to the extent that some of the material may need to be removed from the site, it's our expectation that that may provide a favorable bid, because depending upon the value of that soil and the ability of a prospective contractor to sell it, or at least not incur as much of a cost, that could be reflected in our bid price. So there may be an opportunity to incur some savings on the project. So I, I think we're in a good situation.
The other thing I'd like to mention is that with regard to the areas here that need structural fill, the high school project had a lot of clean structural fill taken out of it, and it didn't go over to this site. And it just seems to me that that was a bit foolish for that not to happen.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, may I just ask a question? If I understand, Ms. Spicer indicated that we have too much there, and we're going to take it away. So why would we take fill from the high school and bring it over to Cross Street just to pick it up again and move it?
No, it's called suitable, it's called suitable fill.
Right.
Not clay, not loam. You don't build a parking lot on loam, and you don't build it on clay. However, all the material that was taken out of the high school that was deemed clean did not go to replace the contaminated oil, and it did not go over to this project where it could be used.
You know, you're, you're so off-topic, and frankly, you're out of order. It's a moot point.
Off-topic?
Yes.
How is that off-topic?
The, the, the earth from the high school was, we couldn't move it over to Yentile.
Why not?
But we had, there was a permitting process, and I'm not even sure what the, what the legal machinations would have been in order to do that, but.
We could have brought it to the recycling yard. We didn't do that, right?
That wasn't part of that, that agreement. That wasn't part of the contract we had with, as a man of Ford, I forget who that was, but. The, the contract that we had in place with them gave them the option to, to take that material, as I recall. Am I, get?
Yeah, I believe the town individuals came in and got that material.
Mr. Chairman.
Did the town receive any money for that, Mr. Smaglia?
He's, he's just out of order now, he's all over the place.
Did the town receive any money for the material that came out of the high school?
Kevin, you know what? I'm not going to let you continue to spiral the conversation as you typically do. I try to give you a little bit of, of leeway here to ask pertinent and germane questions to the removal of this dirt, and you inevitably go over and start talking about the high school project, which is effectively done, and is, you know, to, to the, to the town's satisfaction, and frankly, probably to the town's great, great joy. So with all due respect to you, sir, I'm going to, I'm going to say that your questions are done in this public hearing, and, and ask if there's anyone else in the room that...
My point, not a question, okay? If the same thing happened at the high school, which is my concern, as is going to happen here, okay, the, the material's going to go to private people for zip, for nothing. The town's going to get nothing for it, okay? The town has its own trucks, and it could go down the...
In closing, this statement says, the project...
Well, maybe somebody should go to Treadmill to finish some of his work up.
The project is proposing to reuse as much material on-site as...
If you could compact it, Judy, and we wouldn't have to haul it up.
All right, we're done.
Just walk around it.
Anybody else?
I might need some up there to finish what you said a year ago.
Compact that right down.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Yes, sir.
I'm Martin Meyer of 833 Main Street. I was just wondering, I have two questions. First, could you tell us in roughly how many number of dump trucks this corresponds to?
It's about probably 600 trucks. So it's, it's a long process, you know, it's not like it's going to be done in a week or a couple weeks or something, so.
That'd be, so the second question was, rough estimate, over what period of time are you planning to do the removal?
It's probably a couple months, and, and the process of this would be done early on, because the contractor's going to want to come in and basically get this site down to subgrade so that they can start constructing and building stuff, so it would be one of the first things done early on.
Thank you. At this point, I'll close the public hearing, and unless there's additional questions or commentary from the board, I would accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor. Unanimous to grant the request. Thank you, Ms. Spicer.
Thank you very much.
Give her just a moment. with regards to the department's goals and accomplishments to date. Ms. Rosette?
Yes.
Hi, good evening, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good, good to see you. Thanks for coming this evening.
Yes, first I wanted to thank you guys for the opportunity to come and talk about the department. Obviously, being a brand-new department to the town presents itself some challenges, but also presents some, some really exciting opportunities to Wilmington. So I just wanted to share with you sort of the, the three main goals that are making up our primary vision for the department. Obviously, this vision will probably change over time as we accomplish some of these goals, but some of our primary goals are improving the security of IT at Wilmington. I'm not, security has certainly changed very rapidly, and I'm not sure it's always been a top priority because of maybe resource availability, or, you know, knowledge of, of what's going on in the market. I'd also like to provide end-users with a better experience of their technology between support and the actual technology that they're using and how they're using it. And finally, also, planning for the future. That's something that, without IT having been its own department, it sort of lacked the, the guidance to plan for the future, and it became very focused on putting out day-to-day fires, which limited their ability to grow and provide really good technology to the, the employees of Wilmington. To explain some of those goals a little bit more, in terms of improving the security of IT, a big part of that will be adhering to best practices in standardization, which again, are not things that have generally been applied here in Wilmington. So, you know, sticking to similar types of hardware, similar brands, similar vendors, so you sort of get economy of scale by supporting the same type of equipment all the time. We're also evaluating the current practices and policies and implementing new ones. Some examples of that are password policy. We're going to be enforcing complex passwords, and I'm sure a lot of you've heard of different towns throughout Massachusetts even that have been victims of different hacking and viruses that have gone on, and a big part of that is, is down to the password security. So we're going to focus a lot on that. And reviewing user access, who has access to what, who should have access to what, and sort of locking down or providing additional access where needed. And we'll, there'll be a lot of upgrading of architecture based on best practices. Architecture is really, really important, but it's not necessarily seen by the end-user on a day-to-day basis, but overall, we need to rebuild the architecture that's sort of the backbone of our technology. We can't build on top of, on top of that without, without a strong backbone. In terms of providing end-users with better experience with the technology, we're focused on making it easier for users to get support, to track their support, and to communicate with IT. A main goal for that has been applying a ticketing system in order to create a line of communication between users and IT staff. I'll be providing new tools to IT staff members to give them things to be able to do their job better and more efficiently. Better management of workload and priorities. Again, that sort of ties back down to the tools and the ticketing system, to be able to have a big picture of what are our current issues, and how do we best address those in a speedy fashion. New hardware and software needs. We've never really had a really good picture of where do we need new hardware, where do we need new software? And then on the backbone, again, providing more reliable server technology to provide all that, the IT services to the desktop. In terms of planning for the future, the first thing has been just understanding where we want to be, where is that ultimate goal, and how, where are we now, and how do we get there? And making sure all of our decisions between now and then lead us to that, to that ultimate goal. It's not just about putting out that fire today, it's about making sure that our decision today helps support our long-term goals. Another part of that is maintaining a detailed inventory so that we can forecast hardware needs. So I can tell you, I need six new desktops next, next year, or, you know, in the next five years, I'll need a certain number of desktops or software licenses. Again, that's not something I think has been done in IT. It helps us a lot in budgeting as well, to sort of look ahead, and, and I can tell you a consistent number over the years of, of what we can plan to spend in hardware and software. And carrying warranty support in all of our systems. I think there was always a sense of not enough resources, and sometimes warranty support was sort of left as a way to, to spend that money elsewhere that, that needed to be spent. Now with the, the better planning and forecasting, obviously, we want warranty on those machines, so when there is issues, we can support them better and prevent outages. But also, again, it helps us forecast budgeting and... um, but also, again, it helps us forecast, um, budgeting and purchasing needs in the future. Um, the department just began in July one, so we're looking at about six weeks, um, which is not a lot of time, but we've certainly accomplished a lot. Um, and so I just wanted to sort of mention some of the things that we've accomplished, um, to give you an idea of, of what we've been working on. Um, we've implemented the ticketing system I spoke about, um, it was implemented on the public safety side last year, and we've, I'd been working on and making sure it was ready for the town users, and as of last week, I, um, provided that information to department heads and to users so that they can begin, um, opening tickets. So now, instead of walking down the hall or calling an IT staff member and seeing if they're at their desk, they can send an email, and any one of the staff members can pick up that email and immediately start, you know, prioritizing that work and knowing what's going on. Um, we completed a comprehensive inventory of all the desktops and, and printers on the town side, so I can begin looking at that forecasting, knowing where are our weaknesses. Um, the town side has some older technology, um, that we've been making do with, um, and I don't wanna make do anymore, and, and having that inventory helps me understand really where those weaknesses are. Um, I've implemented a, a managed and modern, modern backup system. There really wasn't a full documented backup system before, um, you know, they were taking backups of important files, but it was a lot of manual process, it was a lot of human interaction. Um, this is a fully automated system that's monitored by, um, a consultant group twenty-four seven, so if a, a backup fails, they immediately address it the next day, and I'm notified, and we make sure that we always have that good backup. And some of those backups are pushed off-site, so if something physically were to happen to our backup server onsite, we have yesterday's backup off-site to, to cover us. Um, we've also implemented a remote support system, um, that allows us to manage the desktops and the software from wherever we may be. Um, this also gives us one pane of glass now, where we can manage, um, the desktops in terms of providing remote support, managing the antivirus and the anti-malware software, um, managing Windows updates to make sure all of our computers are getting those updates and, and meeting that, that standard of security. Um, I've done a, a network reconfiguration evaluation, so in some of the, the problems we've encountered since July one, um, we discovered some, some old configuration on the network itself, um, and that it's gonna require a large reconfiguration. Luckily, it doesn't require replacement of a lot of work, but we have to reconfigure the network to be more secure and to meet our growing needs as we go. Um, the evaluation is a really big part of that. In the next sixty days or so, we're gonna be, um, looking at how do we actually address those weaknesses now that we've discovered them. Thanks to the help of George Hooper and Public Buildings, we've, um, put together a new IT space in the, in the second floor of the public buildings, um, so the IT staff has moved into that space. Um, it's a larger space for them, it's more organized, it's easier for them to do their job more efficiently. Um, we've replaced four aging printers, we've deployed probably eight workstations in those six weeks, we have six more that will be getting deployed in probably the next three weeks, um, and that's amongst all the day-to-day issues that, that we continue to address as well. Um, we upgraded the Wi-Fi system in public safety, so a lot of the, the officers in the fire department have a lot of tablets and Wi-Fi devices that they use to, to, um, to access their data on the go, um, and upgrading that Wi-Fi system was a big benefit to them. The town side will also be upgraded over time, um, this year to be the same system, so now it'll all be a single Wi-Fi system that can be managed centrally. Um, and we assisted the pub, the recreation department in implementing a new online recreation program. Um, so now, residents can go online to sign up for programs, pay for programs, see what's available, um, things like that, and I think that's been a really exciting thing for the recreation department. So those are just a snapshot of a lot of the things that we've accomplished in the last six weeks. Um, we have a lot more to go, like I said, it's, it's a really exciting opportunity in Wilmington for technology. Um, our end-users are really receptive to technology, which, which makes it even more fun. Um, so, uh, as we go, we're just gonna continue, you know, focusing on these goals of planning for the future, making sure that we're implementing security as we go, um, and really focusing on providing the end-user with a really good experience so they want to use their technology and do their job more efficiently.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Kendra, you covered a lot, and a very short period of time there, so my compliments to you.
Thank you so much.
You've been at it for a relatively short period of time, and it's, it's an impressive list of things that have been done to date, so...
Thank you.
Again, it gives me peace of mind to know that we have, uh, the expertise in-house to manage and to really do some planning going forward.
Yes.
Uh, you know, the private sector, uh, at the corporate sort of level, in my experience, uh, has these services in-house, um, and makes sure that the, the backups and the security and the efficiencies are, are put in place so that they can be, uh, maximize their profits, and it certainly makes sense for us at the public, in the public sector here to, um, you know, increase our security while also increasing our efficiencies and our economies as well, so...
Yes.
Uh, thank you for the overview. Um, I guess I'll, I'll turn it over to Mr. McCoy, and then we'll go down to the end and, and offer each, each of you an opportunity to ask questions.
I appreciate the presentation, and, uh, Mr. Chairman, you, uh, covered several points, and, uh, hopefully, we have a great relationship.
Thank you.
Just wanted to, you know, uh, say hello and thank you for being here, and, um, thrilled that this is part of Wilmington's infrastructure. I think, uh, in two thousand fifteen and beyond, it's gonna become even increasingly more important year over year as, um, the world changes, and, and IT is a big part of that, so...
Yeah.
Uh, thank you for everything that you've done to date, and thank you for all the wonderful things that you'll continue to do, and really appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Mr. Smaglia?
Yeah, good presentation, a lot of stuff, short period of time, I think it's all been said. Thank you.
I think it's been said, um, I appreciate the update, particularly when we, uh, you know, have restructured, and, and it's literally a new department, certainly, uh, the residents are interested in hearing about these kinds of things, and an update, uh, from time to time is appreciated, so thank you.
Jeff, do you have, uh, additional, uh, commentary on that, or...
Uh, you know, I, I would just note that Kendra has been, uh, certainly, um, a real star here in terms of IT. Uh, she came to us, uh, from the town of Shrewsbury, um, worked initially over at the police department, and really, uh, helped them, uh, stabilize and improve their computer systems. Uh, when we talked about, uh, going to the next level and creating a department, uh, she was, uh, really the, the one that, uh, I felt would be, uh, the best prepared to, uh, bring us to the next level, and, and I think it's very important, she talked about all the key points, but certainly the planning piece, uh, looking ahead and, and having a, a picture of what we need going forward. Um, you know, certainly, the, uh, people in the department now, and, you know, the past efforts, uh, you know, it's, uh, I, I think there has been a lot done, uh, in IT over the last fifteen or twenty years. It's been a continually evolving, uh, process, and this just continues that evolution, and I think we'll be in a better place, uh, on, between security and equipment, standardizing equipment, uh, making it easier to maintain, uh, the equipment, and then, uh, the other piece that wasn't touched upon particularly, but, uh, will be another focus, is providing the resources, uh, to our staff to, uh, be trained on, uh, the technology, all, all these products, whether it's, um, the, uh, Excel or Word, uh, any of the software that's used, is continually evolving, there's new versions coming out all the time, and we wanna make sure that the staff, uh, has, uh, full knowledge of that, of those resources and, and can use them fully.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, Kendra, for being here tonight. Good luck. Our eight o'clock appointment is with Michael Morris, the town accountant, to review the Standard and Poor's rating. Mr. Morris?
Hello, sir. Uh, Mr. Chairman, just by way of introduction, I would note that, uh, Mike and I were contacted, um, back in, I believe it was July, uh, by Standard and Poor's. Uh, they, on a periodic basis, every two or three years, uh, will look to reassess, uh, a town's, uh, bond rating, or, this was formerly referenced as a surveillance rating. Uh, as you recall, uh, the town's rating has been a, a double-A plus. Uh, so in July, they, uh, asked to, uh, schedule a time to talk with us about the state of the town's, uh, finances. Uh, we spoke, uh, with representatives from Standard and Poor's, uh, in, uh, mid-August, early August, uh, and essentially, uh, the, the rating was retained at the double-A plus, uh, which is the second highest rating available, uh, by Standard and Poor's. The only rating higher than that is AAA. Uh, there were, uh, a number of, uh, very positive, uh, notes that, uh, came out of this rating, uh, specifically, uh, Standard and Poor's commented about, uh, and there's a number of factors that go into, uh, what makes up a rating. It's, it's based in part on the economy, local economy, it's based upon, uh, the town's, uh, management and policies that are in place. Uh, just some of the bullet points, uh, real briefly, they talk about the strong management with, with the good financial policies and practices, uh, strong budgetary performance with operating surpluses, uh, in the general fund. Uh, they note the very strong budget flexibility, uh, with available fund balances in two thousand fourteen, seventeen percent of the operating expenditures, so I know we spend a fair amount of time, and I've made note of it on several occasions, about the importance to maintain these reserves, the free cash reserves, the, uh, OPEB and, uh, capital improvements, uh, stabilization account. This was noted, uh, by Standard and Poor's as a, a very positive, uh, point for the town. Uh, strong liquidity, uh, again, going to the issue of having funds available. Uh, the, the, the two issues that, uh, that Standard and Poor's, uh, identified as of some measure of concern to them, uh, deal with both our OPEB liability and our pension liability. In the case of the OPEB liability, uh, the last, uh, valuation that was done was in, uh, two thousand thirteen, two thousand thirteen, uh, and the OPEB liability, which is the, um, post-employment, uh, benefits, uh, was at a hundred and thirty-three million dollars. It was actually down from the prior, prior rating, which was almost a hundred and thirty-seven million, so we're going in the right direction, but it's still a sizable number, uh, and they, well, they, uh, recognized, uh, and, uh, I think, uh, viewed positively the fact that we are putting aside money. We put, uh, a million dollars aside through town meeting last year, uh, this past year, and then prior to that, uh, five hundred thousand, uh, they do have some measure of concern about the OPEB liability. Uh, and then the, uh, pension liability, right now, we are part of Middlesex Retirement System, all of the members of Middlesex Retirement are obligated to have their pensions fully funded by two thousand thirty-five. Uh, we, at the moment, are about forty-four percent funded, uh, they express some measure of concern, uh, that that, uh, at that, uh, level, although I would note, in taking a look at our neighboring communities and, and those communities that are in the Middlesex system, that we're, uh, right in the middle, uh, in, middle of the pack, so to speak, in terms of our funding percentage. Uh, so those are issues that we, uh, will need to address, we're looking at some options, uh, with regard to pension liability, uh, one possibility being to accelerate the payments on our pension liability, so if you recall, at our, uh, each year, we're, uh, receive a, um, an assessment from Middlesex Retirement, uh, one thing that we are, uh, looking at is, uh, the prospect of, uh, paying, uh, an amount in excess of that assessment, so essentially, if, if, when you're, when you have a car loan, for example, if your car loan is three hundred dollars and you pay it three hundred and fifty dollars, you're gonna pay it off more quickly, that would be the premise here, so that's one thing we're looking at, amongst others. With regard to OPEB, uh, in addition to, uh, committing to fund, uh, money into that trust fund, put money into that trust fund, we also need to look at ways to, uh, reduce the source of the liability, which are, uh, the, uh, costs that come from, uh, re, re, uh, benefits to retirees, so we'll be looking at, uh, the plan design for our health insurance, and one of the things that'll be happening shortly here is we're reconvening our insurance advisory committee, which is made up of, uh, employees representing diff, the different groups, to identify, uh, options for changing the plan design to make our plans less expensive. We went through this in a fairly significant way about four years ago, if you recall, we changed some deductibles, emergency room deductibles and copays, uh, and that, uh, has led to, uh, a lesser increase in the cost of health insurance. I think it's very difficult to outright decrease the cost of health insurance, but if we can, uh, moderate the increase, I think that'll be helpful. So those are some of the things that we're doing, I don't wanna monopolize on this, but, uh, Mike, if, if there's anything you might wanna add?
Overall, though, we were very pleased with the thing. I mean, double-A plus is certainly way more than half-full, about three-quarters full, we'd love a triple-A, but with our OPEB liability and retirement liability dragging us down quite a bit, um, we're still pretty satisfied with a double-A plus, um, and we'll continue to try to fund. I think that's one thing they wanted to look at, is if we were gonna continue to fund these things, and people just started really funding these things in the last few years, us included, so they're gonna wait and see what we do, I think, particularly on the retirement and the OPEB.
So the next, uh, opportunity, uh, we would have to be, uh, reevaluated, so to speak, is when we go out for permanent borrowings, so the expectation is, uh, next year, uh, probably in the spring, we will, uh, go out for a bond anticipation note, uh, on the Yentile project. Uh, as we had discussed, uh, previously, uh, there may be other borrowings that will happen here over the next, uh, y, couple of years, and the expectation is to also, uh, initially use a bond anticipation note, and then roll that debt into permanent, uh, borrowing, and, and at that point, we would have an opportunity to, uh, be reevalu, reevaluated, and, and I certainly would look to try to address some of these issues in the interim, and, um, you know, I think we're very close to being triple-A, uh, it's, it's just a matter of trying to, um, fortify our situation on, uh, pension and OPEB.
Very good, thank you. Um, I would like to open it up to the board for questions or comments, whoever wants to start first, and we'll go from there.
I'll, uh, you know, a double-A plus in the position we're at is extremely good. I, I think, Mike, you've done a wonderful job with your staff, the couple of issues that you discussed that, you know, maybe prevented us from getting a triple-A, we're working on them, um, we have in the past, and we still are, so I think, uh, overall, the town's in excellent shape, and it, uh, shows what our prior town manager did for all the years, and what we've continued to do now. I think double-A plus is pretty good.
I think the thing they're gonna look at is funding, I mean, it...
Yeah.
They're in the show-me phase of this OPEB and retirement situation.
That's what I mean, but we're working on it.
Yep, and it takes time to fund it.
Sure, sure. Good job.
I get, just stepping off from that, um, and, and it's been said in a different way, but I just wanted to highlight the fact that, um, that our rating at double-A plus is being affirmed. This isn't a, this isn't a step backward, um, it's just that, you know, we still wanna forge ahead and try and make another step forward and get the very top rating, so, um, so I just think that's, uh, bears reiterating. Uh, and at the same time, um, you know, it strikes me, I, I'm, uh, I'm not inclined to, you know, debate Standard and Poor's and what their rationale is, I mean, if their measuring stick is consistent across the board, then so be it, um, but, you know, from my perspective, we're, uh, we are taking those steps that we need to take with regard to those unfunded liabilities, and as Jeff alluded to in his comments, um, you know, just in, if you look at the neighboring communities in Middlesex County, we're, we're kind of in the middle of the pack in terms of, you know, trying to meet that unfunded portion of the, of the liability, and, um, I mean, I do have my own opinion as to, you know, I, I think that, um, if that's, if that's the only thing that kept us from, uh, taking a step up to the very top rating, um, I'm, I'm not so sure that's a, that's a... sure that's a great reason. But so be it. We continue to work, you know, look forward, work towards that goal, and we're going to have, you know, an opportunity to go through this process, even in a more rigorous fashion, when we actually go out to borrow money, right? So, you know, we continue to move forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just say quickly, a word comes to mind, stability. We definitely have strong financial stability in this community. Seems like, you know, we're right now, at least met our goal, and down the road, we can obviously improve it. So, you know, there's a history here, you know, that the town has done well, the people in the community get a great bang for the buck, the town manager's done a good job, Mike Kyra did a good job, fiscal responsibility, a conservative approach. I mean, we did have to support projects, the high school, because you needed it. We had to support other items because you need it, you know, Yentile Farm. You know, that's going to be for the town as a whole, not only for sports, but it's for young, through our senior citizens. So, I mean, it's a great place to live, and we're doing fine. And that says a lot about everybody. And I'll tell you, the word stability, even in the private sector, you want employees, you want stability. You don't want to be hiring this person, one week this person, or the finances. It's growth, and it's within the confines of stability, period. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. McCoy. Mr. McCollum?
I think most of the points have already been said, but I think, you know, the liability piece and just the cost of living, and the cost of a total comp statement, I think to have employees and have benefits, there's, you know, it's the total comp statement to have employees and retirees that we, you know, we need to fund and need to support them with a full array of services. And I think all the points of the growth and the expenses that we've taken on as a community, I think the real estate market has been incredibly stable in Wilmington. It's been growing, and this season specifically has been on fire. And people are moving into town, and properties are going well over asking, and people are not leaving, they're coming here and they're staying, and people are fighting to get in here. So certainly, I think everybody in the room is mindful that, you know, we as a community never want to be content with the best we've done, or we'll never do the best we can do. And I think the future's bright, and it's the work of yourself and all of the personnel in Town Hall to keep this enterprise going on behalf of the residents. So I appreciate the work that you've done, and the town manager, and all the town's personnel to see that everyone has a job and everyone has a role, and everyone's working together. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCollum. One bullet that S&amp;P called out, and I put an asterisk next to it, so I'm going to reread it. One of the compliments that they had for the town was strong budgetary performances. The town was recognized for continuing positive operating results and maintaining very strong reserve balances. You know, and that has fed to us maintaining a positive AA+ rating. Mike, I just wanted to see if you could help me understand, AA+ these are, it doesn't mean a lot to me, I guess, in the context of the real world. So AAA is as high as you can possibly go, and it's one step beyond where we are today.
That is correct.
So if we go to do borrowing, and we're not able to impress upon S&amp;P that we are funding the OPEB liabilities and the other things to their satisfaction enough to get us to AAA, what are there potential ramifications to us?
There is some cost, obviously, and it's going to be about .25, a quarter of a percent, more or less. The most recent estimate that we received was .15. So it would have a financial ramification.
But it's not a humongous, I mean, listen, I'd love to get, like you said, and we'd all like to get the three percent, but it's not a, it's not two and three percent additional increase. It's fractions of a percent.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, just a quick question. Talking about stability, Michael, how long have you been employed here at the town of Wilmington?
Long time. And we were single A when we first got here. Jeff and I got here, we were a single A community, and we had many years of trying to get to a AA. And we were very pleased, we moved from A to AA+ back about 12 or 13 years ago.
I know it's in the eighties, but tell the good folks, seriously, what year did you start?
Eighty-seven.
There you go.
You know what I was doing in eighty-seven? I won't go.
Chair, would you be willing to allow public comments so we can ask Mr. Morris some questions?
Actually, no, I wouldn't at this time.
Will you stick around then?
That's up to Mr. Morris if he wants to stick around, but no, we're not open to public comments at this time. Anyone else from the board? Thank you. Mr. Morris, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night. We were into communications, and I think, if I'm correct, Jeff, we're on the third bullet, which is a memo from you to us relative to New England Trans Rail.
Yes. This memorandum addresses a filing that was sent on the town's behalf by Dan Deutsch from our, Deutsch Williams, our legal counsel, addressing the New England Trans Rail's request for clarification to the Surface Transportation Board. Essentially, as you know, the, back in 2012, the Surface Transportation Board issued a decision with regard to the request at that time by NET to have consideration for a transloading facility. And at the time, STB determined that before they would conduct any kind of an environmental assessment, they were looking for a record of decision from EPA. Give EPA the opportunity to finish the work that they had started, look at the alternatives for remediating the site. NET, at this point, is essentially seeking, or suggesting, that EPA, that they should not have to wait until EPA issues a record of decision in order to be considered by the Surface Transportation Board. So this correspondence from Attorney Deutsch makes a number of strong points as to why that decision should stand. The next item is a memorandum from me with regard to a civil service decision on a promotional exam. The board, I suspect, has seen a recent article in the Lowell Sun regarding a decision by the Civil Service Commission regarding our promotional process. And I just want to note that back in 2014, the town had four vacancies in the lieutenant position. We had retirements at that time and needed to fill those vacancies. As part of the promotional process, all of that procedures are governed by civil service, since Wilmington is a civil service community. At the time, we needed to establish a certified list of candidates to be considered, and there were three options for me to choose from. One would be to establish a multi-choice exam that candidates would take. The second option would be for a situational assessment where the candidates are put through different scenarios and essentially asked to respond. And then the third option would be a combination of the two. I decided that the situational assessment would be most appropriate. Candidates internally from the department signed on to take this exam, and we went through a process, hired a firm, a private firm, to conduct the assessment center, all in accordance with civil service. They actually, civil service had to review the consultant's plan for this assessment center. During the course of that assessment center, I was not directly involved in the process, but I sat in on some of the assessments as an observer, as did the fire chief and Kendra Amaral, the HR director. Once that assessment center was completed, there were certain scores that were attributed to each candidate, and they were ranked to come up with the list of candidates that we could, that I could select from. It was then determined that I would go with a, an interview process to decide the four candidates that would be selected from that candidate's list. So those interviews were conducted by the fire chief. We had a, actually, the chief from Andover was involved, a couple of the current lieutenants were involved, as well as Kendra Amaral. And ultimately, the candidates were scored based upon their performance there, and a recommendation was presented to me as to the candidates that would be most qualified for these lieutenant roles. And I made the decision at that time to bring the current complement of lieutenants on board. It's my belief that the process was carried out in a fair and appropriate manner, and I stand by those decisions. The town, at this point, is looking at its options as to whether we appeal this or not. So we'll, I'll be making that decision in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you for that summary.
Next is a memo from me to the board with regard to a request that came from Mayor Scott Galvin, the mayor of Woburn. He contacted me a couple of weeks ago, seeking a letter of support from the town to reopen the Boston, New Boston Street Bridge. The city of Woburn is putting a grant in for, I believe it's state funding, that would allow for the reconstruction of that bridge. I indicated to him at the time that I thought, based upon the nature of this request, it would be most appropriate to bring it to the board of selectmen. Checked back with him to see if he was still interested in obtaining a letter. He indicated to me that the application for funding has gone in, that a letter is not necessary at this time, but he would like to have a discussion in the future about whether the town is, where the town is, I guess, in terms of supporting the New Boston Street Bridge. So for the moment, there is no request for a letter of support.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make a quick comment, because I know we're talking about this. I've been on the board for a few years, and over the past 12 years, a lot has changed in the Woburn area. Wilmington has developed, in, I think, an orderly fashion, but Woburn has, that's why it's called the city of Woburn. That place has developed like unbelievable. They built another interchange off I-93 to take care of Target. And if you drive, and I, you know, I drive around the community, I also drive around other areas. If you go down that road from Target to where Vitucci's is, and I don't know for the love of me what the planning board in Woburn was ever thinking, you've got Market Basket on the right. It's a bottleneck there all the time, because whoever thought about putting, you know, the crosswalk right there, Market Basket, to the fore, the first door and entrance? You can't even get into the parking lot. It's a bottleneck. And I really thought about it. And, you know, traffic is traffic is traffic. But if you take a look at what's going on in the past 12 years, and I'll be totally honest, this is a no-brainer. There is no way I could support opening that bridge. Right now, we've opened up, several years ago, was a Presidential Lane Road that goes into Woburn. We're getting that traffic from that area. We open up this bridge, we're going to be getting the traffic all over from New Boston into the town of Wilmington. Because everyone knows shortcuts. Going to give you an example. My son, Chris, had drum lessons, and it's in the city of Woburn at the center, and it's right next to that Brazilian restaurant, The Taste of Brazil. They've got great barbecue. But anyway, from there, it took me about 40, 45 minutes to get home. It took me about 12, 13 minutes just to get through Woburn, which was pretty smooth. And then now you've got to fight all that traffic. And I took a right by the bridge, down by the gym, the USA Gym, and traffic's all up and down Woburn Street. You take a right, I did, it's all around that area, trying to get on, Mikey Borden lives in that area. You know, so, I mean, I know I'm only one member, but, you know, why do you think they keep on banging the drum on this? They love for that to open up. I think this would be perhaps one of the disastrous things we could do in this community. We should keep that bridge closed. I'd be even willing, at the end of discussion, unless you want to have more time to think about it, I'd even offer motion not to support this. You know, I mean, I've lived in Wilmington a long time, and I think we all take rides around. For example, I'm going to give an example. We're talking about the town manager's contract, and we were in the room. And I called the town manager, and you had a good point. I says, you know, Jeff, I go, "Did you know that they took the mailbox from the Whitfield School?" I says, "I got more calls in North Wilmington that, about that than anything." And he didn't know that. So he sent a letter, and the postmaster chose not to do it. You know, and then, and Jeff did what he could do. I went down and talked to this postmaster and said, "Listen, I really wish you would reconsider it. You don't realize how convenient that is for a lot of folks, especially senior citizens." And to the good work of the town manager, he talked to the postmaster, and he worked to configure that whole area. Now that's back. And you had a good point at the meeting, too. Instead of keeping it at the center, they brought it closer to the road. The point I'm making, folks, is we live in this community, we see a lot what goes on, and it doesn't take rocket science to realize that you open up that New Boston Bridge. I've lived in Wilmington 56 years. Precinct Three is that area. I've lived in that area most of my life. Nicholson Ave, Kenwood Ave. I owned a house on Lowell Street, owned a business for 31 years. It's going to be disaster. And that's the foolish thing that we could ever dream was opening that bridge. I know I'm only one member, but I just, that's why you think they, why do you think they want it? We're going to get all the traffic. What are we going to get from it? Nothing. But aggravation, aggravation, aggravation. And that's how I see it.
What Thomas' Bridge is?
What?
What Thomas' Bridge is? Wilmington and Woburn.
It's between Wilmington and Woburn, and it's in both communities, and they need our support. It's like doing a dance, you need two to tangle. Well, I don't want to take part of that dance. And I think we should keep it closed, and we'd be doing an injustice to this community if we open up that bridge.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. I certainly appreciate you sharing your observations and your opinions on it. I, you know, I wrestled with it, I still do wrestle with it. I looked at where it's located and considered what's on the Woburn side of that bridge, and, you know, the industrial area that leads into that sort of dead end, I guess, and what, A, the ramifications would be to the folks on the Wilmington side if it were opened, but also what, if any, benefits there might be to some of the industrial traffic that perhaps currently is, is maybe making its way up Woburn Street and to Lowell Street. Or with the presence of the new configuration that goes, I guess it's Commerce Way, that goes up to the Target, they don't really have to go up through Woburn Street anymore. So I really have wrestled to figure out, or to formulate my own opinion as to whether or not it would have any benefit, or would it be only negative consequences to the people of Wilmington? And, you know, I certainly respect and appreciate your position on it. You know, I wasn't sure we'd have or need to have an open discussion on this this evening. I'm certainly receptive to it. You've started the dialogue, and if other folks are considering or wishing to continue the conversation, I'm open to it.
I'd, I mean, if the city of Woburn has initiated its, if I understood the manager correctly, an application for a grant which would
That's right.
... facilitate that project. I mean, I think it makes sense for us to take a look at it. I'm certainly not prepared to vote on it tonight, one way or another, but I think it makes sense to get our, the opinion of our DPW superintendent and police chief, and I would assume, to an extent, the fire chief, and whatever other department it makes sense to hear from. But I'd like to hear from those folks, if the board is inclined to take a position with or without the, you know, at the invitation of the city of Woburn or not. Let's take a look at it.
Yeah, I support that as well. If at some point we are asked to render a decision or render a letter of support or otherwise, I would want to have a little bit more meat on the bone to chew on and consider at that time. So I appreciate that, that suggestion, Mike. I don't know if anyone else. Are there other thoughts on that subject?
I spoke mostly, and I don't have a problem with, Mike knows what he wants to do, but 12 years ago, I looked at it somewhat a little bit favorable, but I'll tell you, a lot has changed in 12 years, and it's going to be nothing but a problem for this community. But I had no problem waiting to let other people take a look at it, but I don't care if the Wilmington planning director, whoever decides this is a great thing, my opinion's going to be wrong. I lived in this community 56 years, and I think I've got a better feel what's going on than some people. Not everybody, but that's what I see. And I would hope to, you know, I keep an open mind, but not really. I'm post-8 now, so, all right? So I think people know, I'm not going to change my mind. It'd be totally a disaster for this community. Thank you.
No, it's fair. I certainly, again, I appreciate you sharing your observations on this. So unless there's a strong objection, Jeff, could we ask you to engage all the appropriate parties throughout town, as Mr. Newhouse suggested, and see if we can get some opinions as to the pros and or cons of that ultimately being opened up?
Will do.
Thank you.
Next under correspondence is just a notice, announcement of the annual Town Cleanup Day, which is Saturday, September 26. This is sponsored by the Conservation Commission. Starts at 8:00 a.m., runs until noon. Starts at 8:00 a.m., runs until noon. People are asked to meet at the DPW Building, 135 Andover Street, and they'll be directed from there in terms of where to go to begin the cleanup. Any questions, they can contact (978) 658-8238. In the event of rain on that day, the rain date is October 3. And then finally, under correspondence is communication from Jill Reddish from Verizon, noting some changes in terms of programming. As of September 30, the nouveau TV channel 276 and 1642 HD will change to an FM and features, I guess, music and music-related programming. Subscribers will be notified through their Fios TV message center beginning on or around September 10. Billing messages begin on or around October 15. And then they also note access to Fios TV channel lineup is available 24/7.
Thank you. There are a number of Board to Consider items before us as well, the first being, let's see, Leahy Hospital and Medical Center's mini-grant. Jeff, if you want to expand on that?
Yes. Mary Delai, the superintendent of schools, has identified a grant that's available through Leahy, $10,000 grant, and it would provide an opportunity for individuals to be trained on identifying some of the signs and symptoms of mental health disorders. The plan would be to have two of her school personnel and one representative from the Board of Health, most likely the director, participate in this training, and then they in turn would be able to train both the staff, the faculty, as well as students and parents. I think it's a good opportunity to continue to address the issues that we have associated with mental health and also substance abuse, which certainly is tied into mental health issues in many cases. So the grant deadline is September 25. Superintendent Delai has asked for a letter of support from the board, so I would recommend the letter, that a letter be signed on behalf of the board. In the draft letter I've proposed, this is to Michelle Snyder, manager of the Community Relations at Leahy Clinic. As it's, at its meeting on Monday, September 14, 2015, the Wilmington Board of Selectmen voted to, voted unanimously to wholeheartedly support School Superintendent Mary Delai's application for a Leahy Hospital and Medical Center mini-grant. We recognize that Wilmington is not immune to the increasing level of mental health issues that are plaguing both the state and our nation. Mental health disorders can both precipitate and be precipitated by a host of issues, including substance abuse, behavioral issues, educational struggles, and family disruption. Clearly, a key factor in creating a positive impact on children and adults in Wilmington is early detection of possible mental health issues. Understanding the signs will create a greater likelihood for early treatment and more successful outcomes. The board offers its full support of the initiative proposed by Superintendent Delai to establish a quote "train the trainer" end quote initiative throughout the mental health first aid program. Municipal government cannot address mental health disorders alone. The ability to develop certified trainers for the mental health first aid program will extend early detection and referral exponentially, well beyond anything that can be achieved by solely relying upon a limited number of town or school staff. The town has a very strong working relationship with the Wilmington Public Schools and looks forward to the opportunity to join forces in this effort to address one element of the mental health crisis. We greatly appreciate your consideration of this grant. This is just a draft that I would recommend the board consider.
Thank you. Are there questions or commentary from the members of the board?
I make a motion that we go with this letter that the town manager drafted.
Seconded. There's a motion made and seconded. Is there further discussion? I see none. All in favor? It is unanimous. The draft can go as written. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Chair, is a request from Denise Augusta. I'll just read it into the record. We would like to use the gazebo in the park across the street from the high school for our wedding ceremony on July 23, 2016, in the morning, beginning approximately, I'm sorry, in the evening, beginning approximately at 4:30, maybe 5:00 p.m., and running about one half hour tops. My fiance's family was born and raised in Wilmington, in the Wilmington area, Parker Staples and Waters Family, and still live there today. We are having a reception at the Tewksbury Wilmington Elks and would like to keep everyone in the area for both events. In the event of inclement weather, we will not have the ceremony at the gazebo naturally. We will then have to just move it to the Elks, but that would be decided at the time when we see the weather forecast. So they're requesting use of the town common and gazebo. There are no conflicts.
No conflicts, as you report. Questions, concerns, motion?
So moved.
Motion's made?
Seconded.
And seconded. All in favor? Unanimous? Congratulations to them.
Okay, the next one is Board to Consider License to Sell Christmas Trees. And this has been submitted. Yes. The request has been submitted by the Boy Scouts, Troop 56, and also with the Wilmington Methodist Church.
I hate to sound like a Scrooge, but, but it's too early for me to wrap my brain around Christmas, but I look forward to it nevertheless. Is there questions, concerns, or a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? Unanimous. Good luck to them this year.
We have a request from the Recreation Director to authorize the use of the public ways, specifically Church Street to the high school cafeteria for the Horables Parade. This would be on October 25. This is the 48th Annual Horables Parade, beginning at 4:30 p.m. Proceed up Church Street to the high school cafeteria where volunteers will present all the costumed children with holiday treats. We cordially invite you and members of the board to join the festivities as spectators or volunteers. Volunteers should arrive at the high school cafeteria by 4:00. Last year, we estimated that approximately 575 children participated in the festivities. With your support, we look forward to continuing this time-honored tradition.
Excellent. Halloween's more like it. Is there a question or a motion?
Who'd grant the request?
Motion has been made.
I'll second that, and I'd just like to also note that this is just another example of what this town does as a municipality with the different departments. And Deb Cipriani and her crew do a wonderful job every year. To have over 500 kids participate in anything and get away with it, with, with too much trouble, is, is pretty impressive, so it's a good job. I'll gladly second it.
So we have a motion that's made and seconded. All in favor? Unanimous for the Horables Parade. I look forward to that.
Then the Board to Consider, a request from Gigi Shinlojin to use the town common. She has also submitted a letter indicating, "Dear Mr. Hall, I was very pleased to receive your letter granting me the opportunity to light the common in pink for the month of October. I have been to the DPW. Would it be possible to hold a meet and greet for my family and friends on Friday, October 2nd, from 6:30 to 8:00? I would like to use the gazebo if possible. Didn't need the lights and will not serve food or beverages. I may hand out souvenirs, but will not mess up the area in any way. Expect my guests to drop in and out and would never have more than 20 people there at one time. I will bring trash barrels. I would bring own trash barrels. I would have them parked next to the 4th of July building. If there's something else scheduled, this would, that would interfere, I can change the date." We did check the date. Beverly, in fact, did check for me, and that is the night of a football game. So the request is amended to make the date Sunday, October 4, beginning at 6:30 p.m. It's my understanding that Ms. Shinlojin is a cancer survivor and is looking to be able to make the town pink.
That's awesome. Indeed. So the letter is written and presented. Is there questions or a motion?
Who'd grant the request?
Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. And that is the conclusion of Board to Consider items, which brings us to public comments. Are there any public comments? Yes, sir?
I've got a few comments, a few questions. Apparently, Mr. Morris didn't stick around, so maybe you could answer the question, Mr. Shampoo. A couple of years ago, the town increased, or the town's deductible increased from $100,000 to $150,000 for employee health insurance. And can you tell us if that saved us any money on our insurance premium, or if it stayed the same? And if there's been any analysis done by you, Mr. Shampoo, as to whether or not it would make sense for the town to just pay, give the town employees money to get their own insurance? Because it seems as though we're paying a lot of money to Blue Cross Blue Shield, and we don't collect a dime unless a claim goes over $150,000. Can you, can you go on?
There's a question that's asked. I haven't done an analysis, so to speak. I certainly will defer to the town manager if he has a preliminary answer to it, but I'm certainly, I suspect that there might be some information you could gather as a more formal answer?
Yes. Yeah, this question has been asked, I'm going to say probably for the last five or six years running. It seems to come up at least annually and maybe biannually. But the, what Mr. McDonald is talking about is the town's health reinsurance. So with insurance, there are various ways you can deal with the risk of, of health issues. One of the ways, the way that we have opted to do this now for, since 1990, so 25 years, is to purchase health reinsurance. And the intent is, when there is a catastrophic claim, someone has cancer, someone has some significant health issue that requires, you know, significant dollars, significant treatment, that the town's exposure is capped. For many years, or early on, I believe the first deductible we had was $50,000. It went up to 75, later went up to 100, and more recently, it's been up to 150,000. That's all based upon looking at our claims experience, looking at the number of claims that we have at the various levels, and it's my judgment that the $150,000 is an appropriate level of risk for the town to take. Anything over 150, the reinsurance carrier assumes. To the question about whether we can direct people to get their own health insurance, the fact of the matter is that Chapter 32B of the General Laws prescribes that the town shall provide health insurance to its employees.
Thank you, Jeff.
I guess what I was wondering, Mr. Shampoo, is if you would be willing to do an analysis on that. I think we have 300 employees, is that correct, Mr. Hall?
We have far more than 300 employees when you consider the town, general government, and the school employees.
So do you have a total amount that we're actually, just a, just a point of note, I believe for people that might be watching at home, the town is actually self-insured, and that this insurance policy is a stop-loss insurance. So I had a couple of questions that I had asked. One was, when the town gave Blue Cross Blue Shield an increased deductible of $50,000, which brought it up to $150,000, did that save us any money on the amount of money that we paid them?
Well, certainly by increasing the deductible, the premium conversely was reduced, yes. So there was a reduction in premium. It's just like anything, any kind of insurance product. If you, if you have auto insurance and your deductible is $1,000, and you increase it to 5,000, you're taking a greater amount of risk, and so the premium is reduced.
Can you tell us how much the premium got reduced?
Offhand, I can't, no.
Okay, that's fine. Would you be willing, the next meeting, to have these numbers and have a discussion on this, so that we can take a look and see, okay, if we're paying all of this money out to cover people's health bills, and we're not collecting any money on it until it goes over $150,000? I think it would be a pretty good idea to have an analysis done. Have a presentation to the community so that they could, they could maybe offer some input. There might be some people in town that might say, you know, it might be worth it to give an employee $10,000, and they, they get their own insurance. So the town pays for it, all right? And for example, if the town gave an employee $10,000
Kevin, you've more than made your point. So hold on just a moment. Give me, give me a second here. Mr. Newhouse has something to chime in here, and then I have an observation to make as well. Please.
Well, just as a member of the board, if a question is being directed to the chairman, and the board, and the chairman's going to entertain any input from the board, I would not want to ask the town manager to spend valuable time between this meeting and the next, putting together information that quite frankly, through the budget process and through the collective bargaining process, the administration is in a continuous mode of revisiting things like this. I recognize that this particular individual has had this issue as a pet issue for several years now. As Mr. Hall indicated, you know, the very logical and easily understandable answer that he gave tonight has been satisfactory to me as a member of this board for many years now. I would ask the manager to continue to do what he does while going through the budgeting process and through the collective bargaining process. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that corroborates what I was going to say, which is effectively that Mr. Hall reports to the Board of Selectmen. And I was going to suggest that if members of the board felt that they wanted to have a detailed analysis and formal presentation done, as was suggested by the, by the gentleman in the audience, that we could have that conversation and take a vote. I don't think that there is a need, I certainly don't feel the need, as Mr. Newhouse just said, he doesn't either. I'm satisfied that the business practices that have been followed by Mr. Hall and his predecessor are consistent with the operations of the town. So I feel no specific need or desire to waste time, energy, and resources on that. So if there's agreement on that, we'll move on.
I emphatically agree. I mean, it's a basic math equation to say that the numbers just don't work. I mean, pulling multiple employees together to go out for insurance makes sense. When you pull risk, it's going to drive the premiums down. The fact that we have insurance for excessive claims makes perfect sense to me. I don't know how, if we, if we decide to do something different than every other municipality in the state of Massachusetts, I don't know how we're going to recruit people and retain people to want to come and work here. So that's just at a very high level without getting into Insurance 101, but it absolutely doesn't work. So I do not want to support having the town manager spend time doing this exercise when it's been answered for years, and I don't want to be rude or disrespectful, but I think it's a ridiculous request.
Very well. Thank you, Judy. Mr. McCoy, anything to offer?
I'm good.
Very good. So Jeff, we can move right on into new business and committee reports. Not tonight, you don't. Thank you, though. New business and committee reports. I guess I'll start to my right, Mr. Newhouse.
Nothing this evening.
Luke?
I would just like to thank everybody that came out to the high school last Thursday night. We did the time capsule. We also dedicated the 9/11 memorial. And We also dedicated the nine eleven memorial, and it was, it was a good crowd, it was a busy night. And I'd just like to let everybody else know that this Friday is POW MIA Day. I was fortunate last week to be able to go over to Reading, where they brought one of their young men home from Korea. He had been missing. He was actually a World War II veteran and re-enlisted for Korea and was missing in action for all those years, and they brought him home this week. And just to touch on that, on Friday, please, we say a prayer for Ronald Eaton, one of our POW MIA's. He also has been missing since Korea, and hopefully someday, be able to identify him and get him home to his family. So, but thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks for making that, making that known to us.
Just let it be known, too, that one individual in the audience that brings up this ridiculous, redundant stuff, meeting after meeting, you never see him around town at the good things, and he gets up and leaves, you know, when he's done doing his show, and it's just, the point has to be made that what he is doing to meetings, whether it's these meetings, town meetings, whatever he's doing, it's just, it's absolutely ridiculous, and I, I just felt like I had to say that.
I appreciate you saying so, couldn't agree more. Thank you. I'll go briefly here next, and Lou, just thank you again for bringing that to our attention. I think we owe you all a debt of gratitude for keeping us aware of what's going on in that world, and certainly we'll take a pause on Friday, as you, as you suggest. Jeff, I wanted to see if you could give us a ten thousand foot sort of summary of where the project that's occurring at the corners or the intersection of Glen Road, Middlesex, and Wildwood. From my perspective, I use that every day, several times a day. It seems like it's ahead of schedule, but I'm not positive I'm right. So I wondered if you might have an update for us.
Yes, it, as you know, the project was scheduled to be not completed until at least, I believe it was next year, late in the year. It appears at this point, we are ahead of schedule. The plan is that all the granite curbing, the electrical, the guardrails are expected to be in place before the end of the construction season. The mast arms are on order. There's some possibility that those will be installed before the end of the, this construction season, but the most likely scenario at this point is that the traffic signals will be operational in the spring of next year, that essentially, everything will be in place but for the, the lighting and the operation of the intersection.
Okay. Thank you for that. Yes, Mr. Lingefeld.
Could anyone tell if they're going to put any white lines? I go through the intersection a lot, too, and I noticed trying to leave there after football practice, it's really bad turning left now, because there's no, it's like, it's like a Wild West show out there. Are they going to put lines in there at least, or something, before the lights get out?
Let me confirm what the status is on that. I will check on that.
It really is without, it's just like an open field, and it's kind of bad right now.
Actually, thank you, Mr. Lingefeld. I kind of concur with you a little bit right now. It's, if there's any kind of a, even if it's temporary.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, obviously, the bumps, the roads, the corners, the holes, you know, you have to go through all these things to get to where we want to be. So I think it, it looks wonderful where we are, and I think the end result is going to be excellent. We just have to kind of have a little patience while we're getting there.
Indeed.
Yeah, I will just talk to Mike Woods and confirm what, whether there will be any striping done before the, before next year.
Very well. Thank you. Mr. McCoy?
I'm good, thank you.
Ms. O'Connell?
I don't want to belabor the point, but I have gotten some constituent feedback on that island area that did come out with the lines, so just wanted to reiterate that point, that I'm also receiving feedback. It kind of gives people margin lines as they're coming in and out, going left and right, and then, you know, at least with that island, it was a little bit more clearly defined where people were supposed to file in and out of there. Also, too, I see important dates, and I wanted to defer to the Manager, but I just wanted to ensure, Jeff, that, give you this visual, that you're going to speak about that, too. And then also, I just wanted to take this opportunity to wish you a happy twenty-fourth wedding anniversary. It's my understanding that you're spending your anniversary with us tonight, so that you and your wife Tina have celebrated twenty-four years of marriage, so happy anniversary. And Bev's parents, I believe, is at their sixty-third wedding anniversary this evening as well, so Bev is spending her night with us as well. So I thought that that was worth celebrating as a Board, and wish you well.
I'm not going to have to sing, are we? Thanks, Judy, that's great stuff. Happy, happy anniversary, Jeff.
Thank you.
Important dates?
Important dates, we have the.
Your anniversary, important dates.
It's true. The farmer's market, Town Common Parking Lot, ten a.m. to one p.m. continues through October eleventh. The high school building committee will be meeting this week on the sixteenth, here in Room Nine, six-thirty. I'm sorry, at the high school conference room, we've started meeting over there, so that's over at the high school at six-thirty. September twentieth is the Bazell School Reunion, Fifteen School Street, one p.m. to six p.m. The Town Cleanup Day, as was noted previously, is September twenty-sixth, the meeting at the DPW, eight a.m. to twelve p.m. September twenty-sixth also is the dedication of the playground at Silver Lake, starting time is ten, ten a.m. September twenty-seventh is Wilmington's Eleventh Annual Half Marathon and Five K Walk. Board of Selectmen's, next Board of Selectmen's meeting is on the twenty-eighth, and as Judy mentioned, if I could just borrow this, the, one of the things that is being done as we speak is fundraising for the, as part of the Where Angels Play Program. As you know, Where Angels Play is the group that is going to be constructing the play area, and the premise of their operation is they pay it forward, so to speak. So the fundraising effort that, the, the project that Wilmington has had the good fortune of receiving was paid for by individuals from other communities prior to this. The fundraising effort that they are looking to do now will pay for a future project, and they have slated for the Tuxbury Elks Lodge, a salute Sean Collier night, and this is September twenty-fifth. Peter Lavender and the Limbo Souls are going to be performing. The cost is twenty-six dollars per guest. It's over in Tuxbury, seven seventy-seven South Street, so I would encourage anyone who is able to, to attend.
Thank you, Jeff. Unless, as for the comments, I would, I would entertain a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of engaging in contract negotiation with non-union personnel, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one, A, two. Upon completion of the executive session, the Board will adjourn the meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Made by Selectman O'Connell and seconded by Selectman McCoy. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, 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 and Lou abstains from that. Thank you and good night.